Okay, I'm going to open our meeting. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Town of East Bridgewater Planning Board. It's Monday evening, the 20th of November, 2023. It's 7:00 PM. I'm Roy Gardner. I'm the vice chairman. I'm going to act as the chairman tonight in the absence of Kevin Riley. Also present tonight are our clerk, Jerry Bates, member John Lala, members Rachel Tedesco and Diane Phillips, and associate member Yvonne McCray. First item of business tonight is approval of the minutes from the November 6th, 2023 meeting.
I never received a copy of the minutes.
They were on one of the attachments to the multiple emails that we got.
Oh, okay. Um, it's probably...
Do we have a copy of minutes up here on the table, Ellen?
I did not pick them together, but I think maybe the person who did didn't receive them back.
Oh, that's right. I never saw a response from Kevin on those. Did we get a response from Kevin? Usually he sends an email back with the changes he wants to see. Okay. So let's put, we'll put the approval of the minutes of November 6th onto next meeting agenda, which would be first Monday, December, which is the 4th or the 5th? The 4th?
Well, December 4th.
It's the 4th.
Says on the schedule.
Okay. Oh, you're right. The schedule's right there.
Right.
Yes. So we'll, we'll put the approval of those minutes on for November 6th. So we have two Form A plans, and as of right now, we only have the originals in the room. The originals are down on the table. I intended to show those on the screens for us. Not going to be able to do that because apparently in this ongoing improvement of technology, the interfaces that were shown to me less than a week ago currently doesn't work the same way, and I can't get into the folder where they are, so...
There are 12-year-olds around.
That would probably be very helpful, actually. Because it's probably easier than playing Nintendo and all those kinds of things.
Exactly.
But, so anyway, I can explain what they are, and you're free to look at them as, as we go, but what I'm going to ask for, I'm going to ask for motions to endorse those plans. Technically, what a Form A plan is, it simply moves a lot line, doesn't, doesn't create new lots other than potentially a new lot that already has legal frontage under zoning. It doesn't need a new road. One of those is between 16 and 18 Daisy Lane, which is the new subdivision that's being built off of Central Street. That Form A plan makes a slight change in two abutting lot lines to take an oblique angle out and make the sideline straighter. I did look at that. That doesn't actually change the frontage on either lot, doesn't change the square footage much on either lot, swaps two parcels and takes a funny jog out of the sideline and makes it straighter. That's the first one. The second one that came in is the Smith property at Cross Street and 296 North Central Street. This is separating the, what used to be the restaurant function hall property from the lot that's on Cross Street. There is a lot on Cross Street, or effectively, there will be a new lot on Cross Street. It's currently shown on the assessors' maps as Zero Cross Street, but it's the parcel behind the restaurant that fronts onto Cross Street. Small part of the new lot would be the parking lot, which will be made smaller based on, on the current plan for the, for the restaurant building. That plan is still in the works. It does appear, though, that it will end up being in an adult daycare building.
Oh.
Where adults, in most cases over 50, would be there during the day, no overnight stays. It strictly would be an adult daycare use. Which was presented to the tech, track meeting here a month or so ago as one of the fastest-growing needs in Massachusetts. Someplace to put mom and dad, Grammy and Grampy, during the days. There's at least one of us up here at the table getting very close to that, but...
More than one.
So in any case, we can look at those, those two plans. We can look at them after the meeting. I would appreciate if we could put a motion on the table to, to endorse the Form A plan for 16 and 18 Daisy Lane.
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second that.
So that's a, a motion, Lala? Do we need any more? I don't think we need any more to the motion than, so we'll just go a motion, Lala, second, Tedesco. And just for clarity, a Form A plan is not being approved under subdivision control. It's simply being endorsed by the planning board to say that it doesn't need to be approved under subdivision control.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah.
So that's a, a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
No.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And we'll show that as five in favor and none opposed. And just note that since this action is technically under subdivision control, that associate member McCray abstained from recording a vote. So that's five in favor and none opposed. The next one is the Zero Cross Street to 296 North Central Street, the Smith property. And again, that's the, under the same condition, they're asking for an endorsement, that it doesn't require approval under subdivision control. Oversimplified, a little add to what I said earlier is that that simply means it doesn't need any additional new roadway created for its frontage. It already has frontage on a, on a legal way that meets the requirements under zoning. So if we could have a, a motion to endorse that plan at Cross and 296 North Central for the Smiths?
I'll endorse it. I'll make a motion. I was going to give it to Rachel as long as she share, you know, if we could both get a good seat when the time comes in there. This is adult daycare, we're going to need it.
Thank you.
So we've got a motion, a motion, Lala. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second, Phillips. Any further discussion?
Just a question. Is the parcel that, that is being divided, is that going to give access into the land? Is that the purpose of dividing that?
It basically cuts off what amounts to a, a full house lot to the rear of the property, which would in all likelihood be sold separately from the, from the restaurant parcel.
Ah, okay.
And I would expect at some point in time, provided they can meet the other requirements under the other boards, Title V, under Board of Health, and so on and so forth, that they would eventually build something there.
Okay.
Right now, I expect they'll hold on to it for at least a little while to make sure that whatever the final outcome of the use, reuse of the restaurant building can meet all septic requirements and not need any additional land for expansion of the septic system.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that as unanimous vote, five in favor and none opposed. And again, note for the record that associate member McCray abstained from the, from the vote. Okay, next item on the agenda is public hearing for Blackbrook Estates, north side of Central Street. I do note that the representative from the applicant is present, Mr. Ed Jacobs, PMP Associates. Because at this point in time, I believe based on our most recent engineering review, the only questions remaining in this have to do with how the subdivision is a stormwater management system, which is actually part of the drainage system, which we're approving under subdivision control, is going to integrate into all of the abutting parcels, most of which are owned by, let's say, are closely held but not held in the same name as, as the subdivision. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to, before we ask if there's anyone here, the plan would be to close the public hearing right, right tonight and simply vote to accept the subdivision with some conditions, and, and those conditions are in the sample approval that, that was on the table. Does everyone have that, Ellen, or just?
Ellen, I was actually hoping you'd have one on the top.
Okay. So could I ask you if you, yeah, could you, could you, you want to take this one just to make copies? We'll get the technology sorted out here eventually. It's only been now five months we've been working on that, so. Is there anyone here who, who wants to offer any commentary on the, the Blackbrook subdivision? Have any questions on the Blackbrook subdivision?
Whereabouts on Central Street?
It's actually behind, it's behind all those houses that are being built at front on Central Street right now.
Okay. Thank you.
So this stuff right in here is where all those new houses are being built. The subdivision is going to enter in roughly in between, I think it's five houses on this side and three houses on that side. There's a roadway in between.
Yeah, it looks like there's...
So it's behind them?
Yeah. It's still wooded at this...
Oh, it is, yeah.
From the street.
Right now, it is? Yes. But they're, they're smaller lots. It's a residence B zone, so I believe most of the lots are somewhere between 22,500 and roughly 26,000, give or take. I think the minimum in that zone is 22,500.
Yes.
So I, I do believe the intent is to build virtually all single-family homes. They could build duplexes, but the lots would have to be a little bigger if they were going to build duplexes there. So I do believe that they're going to be all single-family homes on, on slightly smaller lots than the, than the R1 district. They've made major changes in the drainage system. There's now three significant drainage areas on the plant. Based on the review, it looks like those areas are significant to handle the drainage for the subdivision itself. The majority of their concerns right now have to do with abutting properties, and those fall under the jurisdiction of the Stormwater Management Permit Granting Authority. I think to, to understand how this works right now in East Bridgewater is we approve the actual stormwater infrastructure, i.e. the drainage system itself jointly as part of the subdivision process. The DPW acting as agents for the Board of Selectmen are the ones who officially issue the stormwater management permit itself. So the way this will work is that when, when the stormwater management permit for the subdivision, as well as the individual lots as required, gets submitted to the, to the DPW, if they feel there's a need to have further engineering review, it's up to them to have that done. If the drainage system within the subdivision were to need to change, then there is a condition in the approval that you'll see when those copies come back, that basically say that has to be submitted back to the planning board for review to make sure that we're satisfied that that's not going to cause any other problems. Now, the expectation is that it wouldn't, because we use the same consulting engineer. All of the boards in town are now using environmental partners as their consultant. So the expectation is that whatever environmental partners suggest would be consistent with what we've already approved, so.
Okay.
Unless during construction, they find some kind of problem. If they were to find a problem during construction, that would have to come back to us anyway.
Okay. So it's, it's met the standards as far as we know?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's ma, it's, it's met the design standards from an engineering standpoint, which obviously doesn't, doesn't mean necessarily that it's met the standards 100%, because when they start to excavate and, and build everything, including the detention areas, it's, there's potentially things they're going to find that they weren't aware of, so. So in, in what I would call our standard approval template for subdivision, there's 16 conditions that we always put in. And I, I intend to read those conditions. Once we get a motion for approval, we get the motion for approval, I'll go ahead and read each one of those conditions into the record.
I'll make a motion for approval.
So we have a motion, Phillips. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion, Phillips, second Tedesco. And that's for approval of the subdivision named Blackbrook Estates on the plans that we have in our, in our possession. The applicant is Hickory Hill Development. The owner is Demetrius Asiodos. Premises on north side of Central Street. It's on our assessors' map, it's map 95, parcels 1584, 1601, and 1616. It's a single-family residential subdivision consisting of 20 lots. The definitive subdivision plan originally dated March 31st, 2023, and the latest revision we have in our hands right now is November 13th, 2023. Plan is in, being done by PMP Consulting, Inc. out of East Bridgewater. Original filing date was April 3rd, 2023. Hearing dates all in 2023 were May 1st, June 5th, July 17th, October 17th, November 6th, and November 20th. And I'm going to interrupt here for just a second and ask that, we'll, we'll put that, that approval motion on the table, but officially, I should ask for a motion to close the public hearing before we vote further on that. So could we have a motion to close the public hearing on Blackbrook Estates at this time?
I'll make a motion.
So I have a motion, Lala, second?
Second.
Second, Phillips, to close the public hearing on Blackbrook Estates. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I'll show that as five in favor and none opposed, with associate member McCray abstaining. Okay, so given that, I'll, I'll run through the conditions here and, following a public hearing held pursuant to Chapter 41, Section 81K through 81GG, the subdivision control law, the Town of East Bridgewater subdivision rules and regulations, the Town of East Bridgewater zoning bylaws, and the Town of East Bridgewater stormwater management bylaw, the following action was taken by the planning board. We've got a motion, Phillips, and a, a second Tedesco. We'll hold on the vote until after I read all of this, so that everyone understands what we're voting on. Number one says prior to endorsement of the plan, the planning board, the applicant shall sign a covenant in form and substance satisfactory to the board regarding construction of the ways and installation of the municipal services to the individual lots shown on the plan. Reference to said covenant shall be noted on the plan. Two, prior to endorsement of the plan by the planning board, the statutory notification of the expiration of the 20-day appeal period must be received from the office of the town clerk. Condition three, the applicant shall provide the planning board with copies of all orders of conditions, as well as any related conditions issued by the Conservation Commission or the state DEP in the case of superseding order of conditions as issued by the statutory agency pursuant to the Wetlands Protection Act. The applicant shall also provide the planning board with verifiable documentation that all orders of conditions documents have been duly recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Any changes to the definitive subdivision plans required under any, any order of conditions shall be presented to the planning board by the applicant for a unit approval as a modification to the definitive subdivision. The planning board reserves the right to negotiate with issuing authority any mutually acceptable modification to the order of conditions that may be deemed appropriate by the planning board and the planning board's consulting engineer. This condition shall remain in effect until all work has been completed within the subject subdivision. So to clarify, that simply says if while they're constructing, they find a problem that requires a change in any conservation documents, that has to come back to us to make sure that we get that change in our plans as well, and that it's acceptable to environmental partners, which hopefully now with a, with a single consultant for all of the boards, that should not be an issue. Condition four is effectively exactly the same language, except it's under the stormwater management authority.
Okay.
The same applies to stormwater management. If stormwater management requires any changes to the stormwater management system within the confines of the subdivision, that needs to come back to us for review and approval. Okay, condition five is prior to the endorsement of the plan by the planning board, the owner applicant shall provide the planning board with copies of any signed and recorded documents defining all required stormwater management easements as referenced on the approved plans. So before lots get released, the planning board wants to make sure that all of the easements to satisfy the stormwater are actually complete, meet legal requirements that have been recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Until the Town of East Bridgewater has accepted, this is condition six, until the Town of East Bridgewater has accepted the streets and ways shown on the plan, the owner applicant, his or its successors are assigned, shall A, retain full rights of ownership of the streets and ways shown on the plan when conveying individual lots in the subdivision; B, state the reservation of such ownership on all individual deeds to lots in the subdivision; and C, retain full and complete responsibility for the maintenance, including snow and ice removal, repair, or reconstruction of said streets and ways, and of the utilities serving the subdivision. That simply says that the developer or the developers' subsequent ownership, who may purchase the subdivision from a developer, is responsible to maintain it until such time as the Town of East Bridgewater has accepted the roadway at town meeting. Seven says prior to release of any lots in the subdivision, the applicant shall provide an interim ASBIL plan detailing the ASBIL construction details of all stormwater management components and the completed base coat of roadway. Additionally, the planning board requires that the board's consultant be present to review all underground stormwater infrastructure prior to any backfilling to confirm compliance with the approved plans. In conjunction with a building permit application, applicant should provide a detailed final lot grading for review. That goes to the planning building department. That simply shows where the house is located, the elevation the house is at, and what the grading on the lot is going to look like. And in part, that's to make sure that it complies with the overall grading required in the subdivision to make sure that the stormwater management works and that it doesn't grade lots so that they shed water off on other lots. As part of the application for an occupancy permit, applicant shall provide a detailed ASBIL lot grading plan for review. That says that prior to the planning building department, through the building commissioner issuing an occupancy permit, we want to see that same plan that was referenced in eight, now done as an ASBIL that shows it was actually graded the way the plan showed it was to be graded. Final, uh, 10, final approved definitive plan shall be reviewed by the planning board's consulting engineer, and a written report from the planning board's consulting engineer shall be available before endorsement of the final approved plan by the planning board. Now, earlier we said that we don't sign that in the covenant until we've received notice from the town clerk that the 20-day appeal period has ended. So in between the time that, that we approve that, if we approve it tonight, and the time the town clerk certifies that from the time we recorded the approval letter in her office, there's 20 days have passed. That's the time period, hopefully, that it would take, or less than that, for the consultant to say that the final plan that they've prepared for those endorsements meets all of the requirements that, that we've set forth as part of the conditions here. Eleven, his owner applicant shall, shall plant two street trees per lot shown on the plan. The species and minimum size of trees shall be set forth on the list acceptable street trees available from the Town of East Bridgewater Tree Department, which is part of the DPW.
Okay.
Now, as was pointed out, right now, all of those, those, that area is heavily wooded. Expectation is when they start building the subdivision, it's going to be clear cut. That's the reason that the tree requirement is to get some trees back into the subdivision. There shall be one sidewalk constructed, uh, condition 12, there shall be one sidewalk constructed along the roadway shown on the plan. The sidewalk shall be located on the opposite side of the roadway from the water main. Thirteen, base coat of pavement installed on the roadway shall include an integral single install cape card berm. We've required cape card berms for several decades now in the Town of East Bridgewater as opposed to vertical curbing. Reason behind that is, is it's almost, if they're built correctly, the snow plows tend not to damage them at all. The reason it needs to be integral, if the berm is added on top of the pavement afterwards, the snow plows do have a tendency to remove that berm sometimes. If it's done as part of the, the base coat and then as part of the finish coat, then those berms tend to be pretty indestructible. Fourteen, during construction, adequate provisions shall be made on site for the parking and the stacking of construction and contractor vehicles as materials, as well as delivery vehicles, trucks, including off-hours, sufficient to prevent said vehicles from parking or stacking on any public way. That simply says that, that all the materials going in and out of the subdivision need to be off the public way within the subdivision that's being constructed. Fifteen, during construction, adequate and effective measures shall be undertaken to prevent trucks and construction vehicles from dragging, dragging slash depositing soil, mud, and other debris onto the public ways. Sediment tracked on the public roads from construction activities shall be swept at the conclusion of each construction day, and all work areas have been properly, properly stabilized. And then 16, the planning board retains its jurisdiction and right to, on its own motion, modify, amend, rescind, or revoke its approval of the plan after holding a public hearing in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81T, when it believes there has been a material noncompliance with the terms of this decision. And that last condition is not going to apply here, because this is going to be a public street. It won't be a private homeowners association. So that's the 16 conditions. So are there any, any questions, any comments on any of those conditions? Do you have any, any questions or anything that, that was read there, Eddie?
Nope. So all sounds fine to me.
Okay, so given that, I would ask at this point that, again, not hearing any comments or questions, we'll, we'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the subdivision, Blackbrook Estates, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that as five in favor and none opposed. That's unanimous vote of all regular members present and voting. And again, just for the record, we'll show that associate member McCray has abstained from voting on the subdivision. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time. Everybody have a good Thanksgiving.
Good night.
Same to you.
Okay, we got a few other items to, to discuss. These are, we've all basically touched on previously. I'll just leave it up to the board if they want to have any further discussion on any of these items, the, and I'll run through them in the order that they're on the agenda. The Thatcher Street Overlay District, Eastern West Street LLC is, it's called?
Oh, is that? I was confused. Isn't that East Thatcher Street LLC and West Thatcher Street LLC? Or did the name change?
I think those actually are the names, to tell you the truth.
Oh, okay.
I think it's actually East Thatcher Street LLC and West Thatcher Street LLC.
Yes, because I was, I was trying to figure out where East and West Street met with Thatcher Street, and I couldn't figure that out.
They don't. So it is, it is East Thatcher and West Thatcher that, that, and that's simply the LLCs on opposite sides of the street that own all those properties right now that's, uh, oversimplify it, we'll, we'll just call it Everett's.
Everett's Auto, Everett's.
Everett's Auto.
Okay, because, that's what I figured out. Okay.
So Everett's Auto owns the majority of the properties there?
Right.
And they're, they're still in the process of, of looking at other properties there. What we'd like to do is again, on, in our meeting in December, we should have the final version of that overlay district. There's some subtle wording changes we need to work on there. One of those tends to be setbacks from property lines, and the other one tends to be the maximum allowed elevation of things within the, the original proposed zoning bylaw. I had some elevations that were a little bit outside the norm for East Bridgewater in terms of how high things were going to get.
Right. I noticed the, the revisions in that, the language.
So those, those are still being worked on, and we should have a final version of that for our next meeting to discuss.
Okay.
Now, the way we've always done that is we would then post and hold an official public hearing for that zoning change, and then we'd make recommendations to town meeting. Traditionally, the way we do this is it goes to town meeting, zoning changes go to town meeting, annual town meeting, because we don't want to, I said, we would prefer not to have zoning changes go to special town meeting, because typically in a special town meeting, there tends to be a relatively small attendance.
Yeah.
We'd prefer to get the largest attendance possible, to get the, the largest number of registered voters in East Bridgewater, at least aware of what's going on, and then voting on whether or not they're in favor of the change. or not they're in favor of the change. The whole intent of the overlay is to try and make that current use an allowed use as opposed to a grandfathered use. Right now, it's a grandfathered use in industrial zone. As the proponent has spoken to us now twice, once at a planning board meeting and once at our track meeting, that makes commercial financing for an operation as big as Everett's a little bit difficult since it's not an allowed use under zoning. The intent is to try and address that. I think we've received information from the building commissioner as well as other town departments, as well as just observation from members of the planning board. It's a well-run operation. I think many years ago, a lot of the yards on Thatcher Street were considered junkyards. I think if you look at the Everett's operation now, it's clearly a used auto parts and recycling center.
I've been there, yeah.
It's very different from what used to be there, you know, decades ago. Next question, next item had to do with some of the flooding that happened on Central Street where those new houses are being built when we had that eight to 10 inches of rain six or eight weeks ago.
Yes.
I'm not totally sure that we as a planning board or even stormwater management could have done much about that because the, for better or for worse, when contractors build houses these days, they tend to strip the lot bare, the complete lot, which is exactly what they did on all those lots. As you know, if you've driven by that area, all those lots sloped down onto Central Street. Since all of them were basically bare gravel without any other material on them, it kind of turned Central Street into a bit of a mess as 10 inches of rain, eight to 10 inches of rains tend to do. I don't have a drainage problem on my yard, but I did that day. So hopefully that was a unique situation that's going to be a one-off, but we keep getting warning that as years move on, we're going to get more and more wet summers and rainy times. We'll keep an eye on that situation as those houses now get finished and they get lawns put in and graded and landscaping, hopefully that situation improves significantly. Okay, so we've got a partial road bond release for Sully's Lane. Do we all have that one, Ellen? Do you know? Sully's Lane one? That's the one I sent in this afternoon. Sorry about the late.
I think I have it. Oh, yes, we do. Is it this one?
So Sully's Lane, I think that's the old one that was put in previously.
Oh.
All right, so let's look at the other one. I think we all have the Pierce Path one, right? Which was on Bridge Street? The bond estimate for Pierce Path?
Pierce Path, oh, that's.
I have Sully's Lane, but I don't.
That's the original one that totals out to $44,000 or something like that, right?
Yes. Yeah.
You have that. I can have it somewhere.
That's the original bond amount that we're actually holding. So that's the finished paving and a bunch of other work was just done on that.
Let me look at that. I have it, but I saw that.
So the fact that we don't all have all of this stuff is actually probably my fault.
No, I have it, it's just my.
I didn't get some of it to the office until today, and I wasn't aware that the.
Oh, no.
Is that the one that says Pierce Path on it?
No, we only have.
You guys have the one that says Sully's Lane, $44,000.
Sully's Lane, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have Pierce Path.
Okay.
Does that need to be delayed till the next meeting?
No.
Oh, okay.
I have it done, but.
Oh, okay.
Candy wasn't in the office today, and I didn't realize that until late today, and the stuff I sent in today didn't get processed because she wasn't here.
That's right, she's on vacation. Okay, thank you. Oh, good.
The one with green on it, Sully's Lane, let's talk about that one first. I have those, yes. All right, so the one in front of us is at Sully's Lane, which all the houses are complete, sold and occupied and have been for a while, but the finished work and the cleanup and the finished coat of pavement was just done, I think it was, two weeks ago now. So I went down there and did a thorough check of all of those items that are now green. The items that are green on this list are not in that total. So the total without all of those comes down to $6,468. We had put together a policy some time ago that says that we're not going to have a road bond less than $10,000 to make sure we have enough incentive for the developer to provide the finished plans and documentation that needs to get recorded at the registry of deeds. So at this point in time, we could put a motion on the table to lower the road bond amount from the existing $44,000 plus some dollars to $10,000.
Okay.
Yep, I'll make a motion. So we have a motion, Lala, do we have a second to that?
I'll second it.
Second, Tedesco. Any questions? For everyone's information, Sully's Lane is in that section of West Pond Street that is between Bridge Street and the Bridgewater line. So it's way down the end of West Pond Street.
Okay.
It's on the right-hand side, it's actually only got one house on it. There's a small piece of the two houses that front on West Pond Street that actually use Sully's Lane for a small amount of their frontage.
Okay.
They also actually, both of them have garages under. Those garages are both accessed from Sully's Lane.
Just scribbling.
So any questions on lowering the road bond amount on Sully's Lane to a balance of $10,000?
No.
No.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that as unanimous vote of five in favor and none opposed to set the new road bond amount for Sully's Lane to be $10,000. Okay, the other one that I think we were just handed, that's a new road bond estimate for Pierce Path, which is a new subdivision that's being built off of Bridge Street. It's on the north end of Bridge Street, about 800 feet from the intersection with Central Street. It's on the east side, it was paved, on the east side of Bridge Street. It was paved last Saturday, I believe it was. I took a look at that today. The base coat of pavement is down, it looks very good. So the road bond estimate for that, which needs to be placed before we'll be able to release lots on that subdivision, we'll call $90,000. The total number that I came up with based on our standard estimate form is $89,998. We'll round that off to 10, I'm sorry, $100,000, $90,000.
Okay.
So I can entertain a motion to set the road bond amount for Pierce Path that needs to be placed before we release lots at $90,000.
I'll make a motion.
So we've got a motion, Lala, second? Second, Phillips, discussion? So the road bond amounts that we accept now basically have to be a one of two forms. They have to be in a cash bond that's set up with the treasurer's office, where the treasurer actually holds the money in the account, or a tri-party agreement, which is set up through some acceptable financial institution, usually a local bank, where the bank is the third member of the party, the three members being the town of East Bridgewater, the developer slash applicant, and the bank agree to hold an account at the bank and not to release money out of that account until such time as that money is released by the planning board. And that money is to assure that the roadway does get finished. There's still a lot of work to be done. The base coat is down, they need to put in the, finish putting in the drainage structure, they need to do the finished coat of pavement, pavement, and they need to do a lot of landscaping work around the roadway permits itself. That amount of work is probably for a contractor, probably somewhere in the range of $60,000 to $70,000. The planning board, based on the fact that if we were to do it, we would have to hire contract, contractors that would then be required to be paid at prevailing wage in Massachusetts. So there's contingencies of 10% and inflation adjustment of 5% a year for three years that come up, that's where the $90,000 comes from.
I see. Okay.
And that's to assure that if the houses get built in and sold and the developer doesn't finish the road, the town would have enough money to do that.
I see.
By seizing the bond. Okay, any further discussion on that?
Nope, it sounds good.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion to set the bond amount at Pierce Path at $90,000, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And again, we'll show that as five in favor and none opposed with associate member McCray abstaining. So have we recorded or filed with the town clerk meetings for next year now?
No, I sent it to Lee to ask her to hold the room, and then we were going to try to talk about it tonight before I stamp it in with the town clerk.
Okay. So right now, we've got a meeting set up, the same as we've done every year, the first and third Monday of every month, except for those where either the first or third Monday is a legal holiday in the state of Massachusetts, because we're prohibited from meeting on legal holidays. We have one meeting, quote, summer schedule, we have one meeting beginning of July, one meeting in the beginning of August, first, usually the first week, and I believe. I did see a copy of that on my handout here. There is a copy of that in the little, in the little folder we have.
Yeah.
Does everyone have one? I have a few extras.
Yep.
Thank you.
So this year, the July meeting would actually be July 15th. August meeting would actually be August 19th. So this year, it'd be the second Mondays in July and August. Yeah, because the first Monday is July 4th week, a lot of people take that week off.
Yeah.
So there was a question asked by the chairman. He and I had a brief discussion as to whether or not, on those months where there's a holiday on the Monday, the first one comes up right away because this year, January 1st is a Monday. So we'd miss the first meeting of the year. So we've scheduled in the meeting, that first meeting to be Monday, January 8th. But then the next Monday is also a legal holiday, Martin Luther King Day. So one of the questions that was asked in a discussion I had with the chairman is whether the board would be willing to meet on Tuesdays in those months where there was a legal holiday on the Monday which we would normally be meeting.
Instead of.
Instead of the following Monday.
Instead of skipping it, the following Monday.
Yeah. I'm fine with that.
I would be unable to make any Tuesday meetings.
Okay, you can't make Tuesday meetings, so, okay, okay. So normally, other than what you can't plan ahead of time, Mondays are okay for you?
Mondays are generally okay for me, yes.
Okay.
February and April falling on school vacation weeks make it a little challenging.
Yeah, okay. All right, so at least for now, why don't we go ahead and have the office file this meeting schedule with the town clerk's office? You can digest this further? What we can do if we really need to, if we're in a situation where we have a statutory timeframe that we have to meet for something, we can schedule an extra meeting. Provided we can come up with a quorum for that meeting.
Yeah, sure.
That's typically what we've done in the past, and I think that's probably the easiest way to do it. Okay. So can I, for the record, can I get a motion to file the current 2024 planning board meeting schedule with the town clerk's office as our proposed schedule for the year 2024 for the town of East Bridgewater Planning Board?
I so move that.
So that's a motion. Tedesco, second? Second, Lala, further discussion of the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
And you can vote on that, Devon, because that's not a subdivision, so. So we'll show that as six in favor and none opposed with all members present in voting. Thank you.
That works out better for you?
Yeah, it does.
All right, so I think everything else in that list we're working on. OCPC, as we've discussed previously, is working with the town on a master plan update. We are still working with the assessors' office for zoning map changes to get the zoning map up to date. There is a copy of the updated zoning map, and the updated zoning map is now being done by, in the fine print here, CAI Technologies, which is handling all of the assessing maps now. So the. There's copies of these like between each table, I think, and what we have is we have the map that has the CAI Technologies logo in the lower right-hand corner is the new map. The map that doesn't have that in the right-hand corner is the old map. So they're using, I believe, full GPS technology to do the new map. So my understanding is that, at least theoretically, if you go to the new zoning map, you'll be able to, online, once it's done and accepted by the town, you can go in and make it bigger and bigger and bigger and see the actual lots and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Just as you can with our assessors' map. The assessors' map that we now have online is a CAI Technologies map as well. You can blow that all the way up until you just see your individual lot. So my understanding is the zoning map will have that same capability when it's finished.
Good.
But it was sent to the planning board and asked for us to take a look to see if we see any obvious discrepancies. It is a bit busy, obviously, but.
I did go earlier today to get printed out copies from Ellen, and I did note the, it's a little clearer, it's a lot clearer even in the scale.
Yeah.
And what, one thing I noticed was that the actual wetlands, like the ponds, show up as blue. And so you could tell.
There should be some significant improvements on the new map?
Yeah, that's one thing I noticed right away, that it actually showed the streets, and it showed where the ponds are, like Robin's Pond, you could see it, so.
And if you, when it's fully done and available to the public online electronically, you should be actually able to go in and see everything, right down to the pretty nitty-gritty detail.
Yeah, good.
So hopefully that makes a lot of the questions that we try and come up with. The zoning map, which we currently have on the wall, is like four feet by four feet, so trying to figure out on an individual lot exactly where that line is can be somewhat tedious. CAI Technologies has the actual articles from the town clerk's office and from town meeting that changed those with the dimensions, and they're using those dimensions. meeting that changed those with the dimensions, and they're using those dimensions to put them on the map. So, hopefully, those maps will be highly accurate by the time they're finished with And I would ask that, if you look at those two maps and you do see any things that don't look right between the two, please let the office know that, and we'll pass that information on to the assessors office. So, we're still working on the MBTA Community Zoning Project, as we've been discussing. I hope to have something that we can make a presentation with on the big screens here in December.
Nice, that would be great.
I'll take another technology course to see what we need to do to use them.
Okay. Very good.
If there's any questions on any of those last items, items being followed, feel free to ask, and I'll ask the, we obviously have some gentlemen here in the room that I'm assuming would like to talk to us about something, so feel free if you want to get close enough to one of the microphones and let me know who you are and...
My name is Donald Cole. I'm a resident at Middlebrook Estates Association Trust, which is off of Union Street, and I want to thank you all for taking the time to listen to us. We're requesting possibly to have our four streets plowed by the town. It's a private community, it's an over 55. We are all on fixed income, and respectfully, we pay, we got 58 homes, and we pay $300,000 in taxes to the town. We have no benefit from it. We have the police that drive through to check on us, which is grateful, and we really appreciate that, but we have our own trash. We plow our streets and driveways, we have grass cutting. We have no children, so we don't pay, we're paying school tax, but we don't have any children. It's all 55 and over, and some of us are close to 90. So, we are respectfully requesting that possibly the town could come through, especially on big, heavy storms, to give us a plow through. And that's our spiel, really.
Okay, so, I can appreciate where you're coming from, although, as a planning board, there's nothing we can do about that, that would have to go through the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
And the Board of Selectmen would have to speak to the DPW, and we've been advised previously by town council that we can't legally use town vehicles on private roads, except in the case of emergency. Now, it could be considered to make those roads accessible during snowstorms, that that would be considered emergency, but this board can't make that decision.
Okay. Excuse me, this is David Logan, a member, and this is Jim Butler. We are all residents there.
Okay.
I visited with the Board of Selectmen's representative, and it was she who called me back and said that she was instructed by the selectman to go first to the planning board. So...
So, one of the things, and you're learning it fast here, is that, in our glorious state of Massachusetts, the way the laws are written there, in very clear and separate towers where people do things, okay, so, once we've approved the roadway, and the bylaw was adopted by the town that allowed your private subdivision, over 55 subdivision, to be developed, had a requirement in it that the roadway should be maintained privately. Now, part of the reason for that is that, in the majority of towns where they remain private, the residents want them to be private so they can restrict traffic coming in and out of them.
Certainly.
There's a lot of other reasons for that, but that was the primary one, I think, so I personally, as a taxpayer in town, have no issue if the DPW looks at the roadway and determines that the roadway is in good enough condition so they wouldn't damage any of the equipment to do that. But town council did advise us about six years ago, after a case in Middleborough, where the town was plowing some private roads in Middleborough, and one of the selectmen took the town to court because he wanted all of the town's private roads to be plowed by the town. Middleborough lost in court, and the decision was that, from the state appeals court, that the towns, all the towns in Massachusetts need to stop plowing and maintaining private ways, other than for public safety reasons. So, my suggestion would be to, I can, I'm sure on behalf of the planning board, I can tell John Haynes, who's the DPW director, that we don't have any issue. There is four over 55s. You happen to be in the smallest one.
Yes.
The other three are bigger. I'm not sure that the others would ask that or not. I would expect that if the town opted to plow your private subdivision...
They would step up to the plate.
There'd be three in line very quickly.
Yes.
So, I don't know what to say, other than that, I'm sure the planning board would have no issue with that.
We appreciate that, thank you. So, what's our next step? Do we have another step, or is it really dead in the water?
Never dead in the water, don't I?
I would suggest, myself, I would put a letter together, and brief and to the point, copy the Board of Selectmen, the DPW, John Haynes, he's the DPW director, and the planning board. Copy all three officially with a formal request...
Okay.
...that the town consider of plowing the roadway. And I mean, I understand the, you know, one of the reasons we got this adopted in, I believe it was 1987, the bylaw that allowed those to be built, those four communities, was that originally, the townspeople were concerned about the relatively small lots and the number of houses there, but when it became very obvious that there's not going to be any children, and that's not totally correct, there could be theoretically, depending on certain family situations, but generally, there won't be any children there, that 50-some-odd percent of the tax dollar doesn't go to the, to pay for students within those subdivisions, and that's the current breakdown roughly, it's roughly 50% of the tax dollar.
Right.
So, I understand that issue, that those communities pay a lot of tax money, and they don't pay a lower tax rate than the rest of the properties in town do.
Doesn't seem fair, does it?
I won't try and debate that, not at all.
What if in our letter, we said we would hold the Town of East Bridgewater harmless for any damage that their plows may cause? If there were any damage, it would be our responsibility in the spring to fix it.
Certainly, anything like that, I mean, before I'd recommend you do that, I'd recommend you talk to an attorney about it, but I would certainly think anything like that, that would be looked at from the outside as an incentive for the town to go ahead and do that. Again, I don't see that there's anything negative about saying that.
Great. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks for your time, all of you. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
I'm glad you see some of our side, anyway.
Hey, we all live here.
Someday I might... Happy Thanksgiving to all.
Same to you all.
Stay safe, take care. Thank you.
I think the safety issue is true. I mean, if you can't get in there as a...
I understand that.
Well, the roads were all approved by the town, so...
Yes. In fact, we approved them. The planning board approved.
Right. And we used to have the trash picked up initially, when I first moved there 18 years ago, we had to buy the bags, and the trucks would come in, and they made an awful, awful mess of the streets. But we, we've grown past that, we got our own trash company now, and like I said, we've tried to keep it in good shape, and if you've driven through the area, you'll see how nice it is. It's pretty nice.
I'm impressed with the way all four of those over 55s are being run and handled. They're all in, I think, in excellent shape and a definite plus for the town, and they meet a serious housing need. We need, actually, we need a couple more of them.
Yeah. We're all getting older.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Take care, guys.
I said it again, I said Easter. I heard you. I don't think they heard you.
Katie, you need to see us?
Since you guys are going to be signing the decision and/or the covenant tonight, it needs to be, doesn't it need to be...
Yeah, we're not going to be ready to sign it tonight, though.
The decision?
And the covenant doesn't get signed until the plan gets signed.
Okay, so, the decision won't get signed tonight?
Not tonight. We still have to sort out, did Kevin ever say whether or not he feels the decision only needs a single signature?
I'm not sure we came up with that.
Because he was asked that question a while back, and I'm not sure that we ever resolved that.
Don't think so.
Yeah, okay. I'll try and keep that on my list to remember, if you can help me remember that, Ellen, that... There was a question of those three documents, which ones actually, we know that the covenant and the lot releases need to be signed and notarized. I don't believe that the letter of approval needs to be notarized.
Sometimes.
Because it's the covenant and the, the covenant and the lot releases, those are the ones that actually get recorded at the registry that allow the lots to be sold to third-party individuals, because the approval letter itself doesn't allow them to do anything other than wait for the 20-day period to end before the covenants and the plans get But I'll leave that to get sorted out between Kevin and the town clerk's office. I tried reading it on the registry website, what things need to be notarized, and it's not really clear. As with most things in town and state government, it's really not clear exactly what they... It is clear that the covenants and the lot releases do need to be notarized, though those two were pretty clearly identified.
Could I ask what development we're talking, you're talking about?
That one's Blackbrook Estates, that was the one we approved tonight.
Okay, thank you.
So, for everyone's understanding, there's basically, well, there's a lot of steps, but there's three major steps. The approval of the subdivision, which is what we did tonight.
Okay.
The signing of the endorsement, if you will, of the plans and the covenant, those go together, hand in hand. The plan and the covenant, they're always supposed to be signed together, and they're always supposed to be recorded together. Now, the reason for that is the plan creates a bunch of new lots. Someone could draw a deed up off an individual lot within a subdivision and then convey that deed to someone, i.e., sell the lot. We actually have a case in town where a subdivision was approved. The plan, the name on the final plan got changed.
Oh.
We think intentionally. The name on the covenant was different. The name on the covenant had the original plan name on it. Those two documents got recorded, but because the name wasn't the same, there's no way to tie the covenant back to the plan. The owner of that land, the very next week, deeded all the lots out to different family members, and there's no road there.
So, you kind of jumped.
So, right now, none of those lots can be built on because the road's not there yet.
Oh.
And we'll leave names out of it, but let's simply say that several of the family members don't talk to each other anymore.
Oh, boy.
So, they all hold vacant pieces of land which can't be built on.
Well, that's a mess.
That is.
A total mess, yeah.
I can see that happening.
Now, if the plan and the covenant are correctly identified, so they clearly go hand in hand, i.e., the plan says Blackbrook Estates, the covenant says Blackbrook Estates, then that's how they end up getting recorded at the registry of deeds, and it's clear to anyone involved that they shouldn't be accepting a deed for Blackbrook Estates if there's a covenant saying you can't separate the lots yet.
Okay.
Then the next piece, the third piece, if you will, is the lot releases. That's what we did tonight, and we voted for the bond. We basically said, if you put that bond amount down, we will release those lots to you when the base coat of pavement is done, which it has now done. That basically says, I don't want to overstate this, but it basically says that if the town had to finish the roadway, we at least in theory have enough money to do that, because it's this board's job to protect the value of the land and the value of the properties in town. That's actually the primary job of the planning board, under zoning and under subdivision control, to protect the value of the land and the community.
Okay.
This is a good beginner's course, thank you.
Okay, does anyone here have any other questions, any other comments, any other things we need to discuss? Ellen, do you have anything that we need to discuss? Okay, and again, I apologize for, I forgot that Candy was out most of this week, and I sent you all that stuff this afternoon, which wasn't very fair.
Okay.
That was on me.
I got it done. I just didn't make all the copies because, you know, the screen would be working.
Yeah.
I'm going to make another attempt to change my, I have it here in the back of my notebook, the steps to go through to get this to work, and it didn't work again, so...
Would he come and help us?
He does help us.
Will he come the night of the meeting?
Maybe next time we'll do it that way.
Because I need to see it.
No, understood, understood, and that, I should have got here earlier today and just tried it again, but I was sure I'd be able to do it today, but...
Yeah.
So, anyway, I guess at this point, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Our work here is done. When we next time?
I'll take that as a motion, Lala, the second Phillips to adjourn, we'll call it, call it 8:08 PM. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And we're adjourned at 8:08 PM on a unanimous vote from the board. Thank you.
Sounds like a good idea.